I would like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for March 27th, 2023. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Yes, we do a public which it says one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin, here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo's excused, Lewis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton's excused.
Yes, Councilmember Leo is traveling. Councilmember Stanton called in with an illness. Could I get a motion to approve their absences?
So moved.
Motion Gardner, second Baldwin, I'll take. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Mayor's comments. Those of you tracking the short-term rental issue, just for everyone's clarity, ordinance number 230322-A, a temporary moratorium on short-term rental ordinance is not on tonight's agenda. Nevertheless, it's an important issue. We know folks have comments on that particular issue. So we do have two public comment periods available. So the first public comment period is on agenda items only, but there will be a second public comment period for items such as that that are not on tonight's agenda. In other comments, I just want to share that the city manager and I had a very nice visit and lunch with AT&amp;T's Legislative Affairs rep. We actually dragged him to the top of Mount Bald Head today to show him around. We had a nice lunch with him and talked a little bit about the project. We didn't talk about any of the contractual matters before us, but as their legislative rep, he was able to tell us some of the interesting things they're doing with other municipalities, counties. And Dan Fox, I'm glad you're here tonight. He also highlighted the, something called the FirstNet, which is a technology that AT&amp;T was granted by the federal government to give first responders precedence in time of emergency when a cellular network goes down or is overloaded, which I think may be very interesting to your board. I don't know if you guys are already on it or not. No need to answer at this point, but we thought it was very interesting. We actually thought we might explore it with city staff because the utility of having our staff in a weather event or other type of emergency to be able to have precedence to communicate in an emergency might be quite useful. So it was a good visit there. In other matters, I will also let you know that I did get a call on Friday, an email from the COO, the Chief Operating Officer of the Red Water Group. He was interested in what matters related to the waterfront. I relayed him to the equivalent of our CEO, which is our city manager, to determine what steps are next. So I did not want to meet with him without going through the CEO here, our city manager, and possibly Planning Commission. But the Red Water Group, as you know, are the folks that run the Butler across the way. So just wanted to highlight those two engagements I had over the past few days. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for comments.
Did I blackout? Did we do roll call?
Yeah, we did.
I did blackout. All right. City manager's report is on page eight of your packet. I will go over some highlights for you. Road construction season is upon us. We have an announcement from MDOT that they're going to be doing some bridge reconstruction work. So please stay tuned on this. The city will communicate the project and will advocate for safety and traffic flow. We'll get information on our website when the timing is appropriate and stay in touch with our residents and stakeholders. Just so you know, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Tri-Community effort is underway. The council will see a proposal for professional services to assist in updating this plan. We'll bring that in front of council. The last time this plan was updated, 2019, the city went on its own and did not involve the City Village of Douglas and/or the township. I am advocating and will recommend to this council that we join the Tri-Community effort as had been done in the past. Okay. Just an update on City Hall, the exterior repairs. We'll be getting into that project in a few weeks, excuse me, second week in April. So look forward for City Hall. And then also just a note of gratitude for a few folks. We had a Mr. Lyle Kissy drop off this photo, nicely framed photo that you see here. But Lyle doesn't know, and maybe this is too big of a request, but we're going to have to have other seasonal pictures. This is only going to work for us in the winter. So anyways, very, very nice of Lyle to drop that off for City Hall. Appreciate that. Also, the Garden Club, they're getting ready with plant orders. So always thanks to the Garden Club for the seasonal plantings that they put out in the city. And then also, I think in Scott's report, we have some pictures of the swing set that was installed at Oval Beach. I won't steal Scott's thunder on that, but we do appreciate the generous donors for that. And then also the CVB in working with us with the QR code, which is later on, on your agenda a little bit later on. So, Mr. Mayor, that completes my comments and highlights.
It's a great photograph and it's interesting. Recently, someone posted a picture of a painting of City Hall that they found in an antique shop in Illinois. And Russ, you'll be interested in this. It had the clock above the door. The missing clock, so.
Maybe that's where it went.
Maybe it went to the left. I don't know. But it's a beautiful paint. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful photo, yes. Do we have any agenda changes tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to guest speakers. I don't believe we have any guest speakers tonight, but we do have public comment as always, and public comment on agenda items only. Please limit your comments to the agenda items that we are taking up tonight and limit your comments to three minutes. I will open up to the floor to start and then we'll pick up people on the Zoom call. And for everyone's benefit, please identify yourself by name and where you reside for the benefit of the clerk in keeping minutes of our meeting.
Hello, I'm Mark Klungle, 747 Water Street in Sagatuck. Mill Pond Realty. I've been around Sagatuck for a long time, even though I really grew up in the South Side of Holland. I remember the pavilion. I was here the night it burned, watching the smoldering ashes and the fire hoses. Lived in the Sagatuck Township in the 80s and the 90s. I've been a resident here for the last 15 years in the city of Sagatuck. Lauren's been here for 40 years as a city resident. We're proud to be residents. It's not easy to become one. The real estate cost of entry and the taxes to stay here are quite high. We're proud of the residents here in Sagatuck because they always step up to do and contribute to the needs of the city. Lauren and I choose to be residents by living in Sagatuck. We choose to keep our business in Sagatuck. We choose to vote in Sagatuck. As a resident, we have that right and obligation. We choose to own property in Sagatuck and therefore pay our taxes to Sagatuck. We're proud to serve our city. In this short-term rental committee formation, our residents raised their hands to help the city rental issues, only to be rejected in favor of non-residents. Does our council feel our residents are incapable of working on city issues in this decision to pick non-residents to the City of Sagatuck Committee? This is a Sagatuck Committee, not a Tri-Community Committee. The Short-Term Rental Committee is a Sagatuck Committee charged with doing the research and developing the input for revised short-term rental ordinance for the city of Sagatuck, paid for by the residents of Sagatuck. Yet, many non-residents were chosen to serve on this committee when all the city residents raised their hands to serve. It's hard enough to take the risk to put yourself out there as a resident and then to be humiliated because non-residents are favored for a city committee position. These actions indicate an action to stack the deck on this committee to get a desired result versus the desires of the city residents. Our charter provides little to no protection of choosing non-residents to city appointments. Are we now facing appointments of non-residents over residents for planning, historic, or zoning? Or the vacancy appointment of a non-resident city council member? Our charter appears to allow it. Or can this slippery slope lead? Can the residents have trust in this council to be protected from the exploitation of the loopholes in our city council, our city charter? Councilperson Leo clearly stated this committee should be Sagatuck residents at an earlier meeting. The input from Council Leo apparently was not followed. I'm requesting you reconsider the non-resident appointments in this Sagatuck City Committee over the qualified residents that raised their hands to serve. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Diana Decker, 128 Elizabeth. I thank you for everything and I heard a comment about transparency. And I was at the Meet the Candidates night and it was talked about the rentals there. So you've been transparent all along with the meetings. I would like to see the council amend the Task Force Committee for it to be at City of Sagatuck, property owners or residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would wish to offer comment? See any takers? Jamie, I don't see any hands raised on the Zoom. Do you see anything on your screen?
I do not.
Okay, with that, I will close our first public comment period of the night. And that will move us to item number nine, our consent agenda. This will be a roll call vote. And this will be to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023. It's on page three.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Gardner.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion Gardner, sorry, Martian, motion Lewis. And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Any discussion on the minutes? See no discussion? Click right to call the roll?
Yes, Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Lewis is, or Leo's excused, Lewis.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Stanton's excused.
Great. That takes us to item 10, Staff Reports, Boards, Commissions, and Committee. A Staff Reports, starting on page eight. Ryan, you gave us some highlights already. Is there anything else you wish to add under 10A1?
All set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. We have Peter on the line. Peter, any highlights you'd like to share with us from the treasurer?
No, I don't have, there's no highlights, just doing the same old stuff, taking care of the finances.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning and zoning, I don't know if, well, there you are, Ryan. Sorry.
He is right up front.
He thought I was going to miss you at this meeting, didn't you? No. Anything, any highlights you'd like to share with us? Great. I don't see any questions. DPW, we've got Superintendent Herbert here. Scott, anything you'd like to share? Come on and approach if you got anything, yeah.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks again to the people that donated. The Daniel J. Reed Foundation was generous enough to donate $7,500 to the city of Sagatuck to upgrade our very old antiquated swing set out at the Oval Beach. The new one is installed, photos provided, and we think we couldn't be happier with the way that the project turned out. So this had been something that we had worked on. I looked back at my emails to like, when did we start on this? It was a while ago, spring of 2022, but it's finally on the ground. And this, the new swing set is a combination of the traditional belt-style swings. And then the next one over from that is expression swings. So and then the one after that are the zero-gravity swings. So it just promotes more universal accessibility, which we really appreciate. And even the color scheme looks great out there. We think it fits the space well. So just once again to the Daniel J. Reed Foundation and in particular Pete and Susan Swanson, along with Gordon Stannis, who I worked with directly on it.
There you go. Great. Looks really good, Scott. Thank you for that. Great. Next, we have A5, which is Police Captain Enstfield. Anything exceptional you'd like to share? Nothing tonight? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I don't believe we have John Moxey, our engineer, on tonight. No, okay. Let's see, hands raised. Very good. We're to 10B now, Boards, Commission, and Committees. Fire District Administration Board, Dan Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to rebrief. Thanks for the heads up on FirstNet. I have not heard that discussed, so I don't know. And I certainly pass it along and also pass it along to Jane, who's involved in the 9/11 board in Alleghen.
Yeah, the AT&amp;T rep said he had a team that'd be more than happy, the AT&amp;T reps said he had to be more than happy to give you guys a presentation if it's of any interest.
That'd be terrific. I appreciate it. This is from the meeting of the 20th of March, Fire Board meeting of the 20th of March, pretty straightforward meeting, proving Peter's billkeeping and paying $76,635 in invoices. A few items from, or an item from the community risk reduction, which is a consistent interest of the department. Wendy Bales, who's one of the EMTs in the Fire District, has become a certified instructor for CPR classes. So those CPR classes for the entire community are going to be offered again at the Fire District. And you can check the site for that. There'd been a vacancy. We didn't have a certified instructor and they got to be certified. So that's a good thing. Like the city, the Fire District and the chief particular are very concerned about those bridge reconstruction things and the incredibly short timing and a notice given. But in both cases, bridge decks are going to be replaced. Apparently, in both cases, it's going to involve, I don't know if this is simultaneous or not, but it's going to involve one-way traffic on those bridges with a traffic light, so there'll be stop traffic and then you get to go and they get to go. In the, on the 36, exit 36 bridge, you can imagine what stop traffic on that bridge is going to look like this summer. I mean, those cars will be backed up all the way back onto the interstate, all the way down, you know, when the red light is on and they're coming off at the rate they come off. So, but in addition to that, the chief is engaged with MDOT on emergency plans for how to get from here to there. We, there are fired, there's fire equipment that's within one foot in width of the space allowed on the bridge deck when they'll be under. So there's a number of concerns there. And as I say, if both of these go at the same time, Katie bar the door, it's going to be special. On that community risk reduction, I wanted to point out, at least at this podium, since some people have mentioned us, that Grass Cap, if you drive by Grass Cap Fire District, Fire Department out there, they have a sign, they have their sign now hawking their blood pressure checks. I think it's Wednesday morning from 10 to noon or something like that, every Wednesday. And somebody, one of our Fire Board members wanted to make the point that blood pressure checks at the Fire District facility here anytime you walk in, any day. So not that we, I don't want to throw stones at our good friends at Grass Cap, but they got a nice, they got a nice commercial record article out of that deal. So there's some of that. And finally, there, the, as sort of mentioned last time, the ambulance committee, they're in the process of forming that second working group to look at jurisdiction issues and legal issues related, related to ambulance. And for what it's worth, the comment was made in that regard to not expect this ambulance process to be a, you know, done by June kind of deal. It is going to take a fair amount of study and a fair number of meetings, including public meetings on that. So any questions or whatever?
Any questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Gregory, anything on interurban board?
We are just been approved for two grants, one of them $32,000 for garage doors, but bus wash curtain, because we actually wash our own buses, believe it or not. Bus lane, a new bus lane, office lighting and insulation. We also received a second grant for $34,000 to replace our leaky vestibule and replace ceiling tiles. And we'll also have some bathroom upgrades to the building there. We're happy about that. We just joined an investment pool, the Michigan class investment pool, that's something that the city of Sagatuck and Douglas and many, many folks are a part of. And we just did that because we're in a strong cash position. And so that way we can earn more interest and make the money. We see people making off of that and for more improvements and things for interurban. Also, we've completed and approved the draft of our annual audit for 2022 and are handing that in.
Great. Thank you for that, Gregory. Anything for Gregory? Question wise? No. That takes us to item three, Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. Barry Johnson, you're here. Anything to report on Cal Lake? Good. Wonderful. Haven't seen you in a while. Welcome.
Barry Johnson, Chair of the Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority, on our March 20th meeting, we had our yearly election of officers. Motion by Beckon, seconded by Urquhart from Douglas. I was appointed by unanimous roll call vote as the chairperson. Dan Urquhart from the Douglas, it was reappointed as vice chair. And Chris Bernhardy from the Township was reappointed as the Secretary of Treasury. Y'all had a full, send a full packet to Ryan. So if you're, you know, want to go through our 70 pages, you're always welcome to. Just some quick highlights. During the ice storm, let's back up a little bit. Yeah, the ice storm of February 22nd and 23rd, there were no power outages at several of the facilities. Actually, there were power outages at nine sites. And, but in anticipation of the ice storm, we had put all the generators we had available to keep the lift stations and everything running. And that was great until February 24th, when one of the generators popped a fuse and we had a 200-gallon sewer overflow into Goshorn Creek. And so testing for feral coliform samples were made above the leak to get a benchmark and then at two places beyond it. And they were submitted to the Alleghen County Health Department with no issue. 200 gallons was enough that it didn't cause any problems, obviously. So that was noticed on MLive because we couldn't get anything into the commercial record in time for the next issue. And so it was properly noticed. And what else of interest? The, that's pretty much it. We did have a plugging. You've heard of icebergs. We often get icebergs and they plug up the river and we get backups. Well, ours are called fatbergs. A fatberg is disposable wipes in addition to some of the fats and the things that come down from the restaurants and everything and the combination of the cooking oils and fats and non-disposable, even when they say disposable wipes, they plug it up and things stop up and we got to go drag these things out several times a year. So don't flush any wipes down your toilet, please. So other than that, I think that covers all the pertinent things. Again, the full packet is available. And you guys can look at that if there's any details.
Thanks, Barry. Any questions for Barry?
Thank you.
And yes, flushable wipes are not indeed flushable. They are not. I learned that in my day job. Cal Lake Harbor Authority, Lauren is out six. I don't think we have a report there. ZBA, did I see Bob on the Zoom earlier? See any hands up? I thought I saw Bob. Maybe now. Okay. I, I do see, no, I don't see. Okay. Historic District Commission, anything on, anything on history?
Just, we had a special meeting on March the 16th to approve a project at 331 and 333 Culver. And the Planning and Zoning Administrator covered that in his report.
Very good. Thank you, Garnet. Thank you. I do see Steve Mans on the line on the Zoom. Steve, anything you'd like to share, any highlights from Planning Commission? There he is.
To council, Plan Commission, you know, obviously we're following closely your vote here today regarding the task force. And we'll be working with that. And then we have our April meeting that will be coming up, the Thursday of this month.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Don't have any. Great. Eight, Parks and Public Works Committee. Helen, I think you'd like to share on PPW.
We meet tomorrow morning, 10:00 a.m. Come and join us.
Great. Holly is not here for Tri-Community. Don't see her online. And that we've kept a standing item on Tri-Community Recycling and Ad-Hoc Committee. I think Garnet, you have some updates there?
I do. We had copies for you all. So Dan DeFranco, myself, Kelly Roach, and Kathy North are still continuing and working together. Several of us are Rotarians, so we're kind of a joint project with former members of the Recycling Committee and Rotary. We have a scheduled Household Hazardous Waste Day and Styrofoam Collection collaboratively, collectively at the same date on the 26th, I believe, I have it in here, of September. Already worked it out with our lovely DPW. Thank you very much. So that event's going to occur. Rotary is pursuing a grant from Rotary International. And Dan DeFranco and I and Kelly are meeting tomorrow to pursue a grant out of Eagle for electronics recycling. So we're going to work on that. And Dan initiated that. So we're going to, he felt comfortable taking the lead on that. So that would be nice if we could get that kind of funding to cover electronics because every year we have just a ton of electronics that folks turn in. So that, that event will be in September. And I'll be coming to the municipalities for financial assistance as I have in the past. And that's what I've outlined for you up here, so you can see what we're looking for. Pretty similar to what, and if it's anything like last year, it'll end up being, I think for us, it was what, for the city of Sagatuck?
$1,000, it looks like.
Well, last year we ended up paying, our portion of it was 900 bucks. That was that, based on participation. So.
Thanks for that, Garnet. Great. Thank you. We have no request for payments tonight. 12, we do have approval of accounts payable. This will be a roll call vote. We have accounts payable in the amount of $53,397.89. It's on page 13. Do I have a motion to approve? So, motion Gardner?
Second.
Second Baldwin? Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo's excused, Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton's excused.
Very good. Motion carries. We have no introduction of ordinances. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. That takes us to new business, item 16A. You'll find it on page 27 of your packet. It is the Waterfront Moratorium. This will be a roll call vote. There you go. Oh, you're already there. Hold on. Got right up there to the podium.
If you're ready for it.
Awesome. Go for it. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, city council members.
So you discussed this at length, that's your workshop meeting last week. But by way of background for folks that maybe weren't there, I'll just kind of provide a brief explanation and then let you ask any questions that you may have and deliberate from there. But before you tonight is a proposed police power ordinance that would enact a temporary moratorium on permitting, approval, and consideration of new buildings, construction, existing building expansion, and site development, including parking and site improvements in all waterfront locations in the Water Street North, Water Street South, Water Street Commercial, and Resort zoning districts. These are commercial zoning districts in your zoning ordinance. As we discussed at your meeting last week, typically with a police powers ordinance, that would be something that would come straight to the city council. In this case, we took it to the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to you on whether or not to enact or adopt a Um, in this case, we, we took it to the Planning Commission uh, to provide a recommendation to you on whether or not to um, enact uh, or adopt a uh, 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 moratorium uh, along your waterfront. The Planning Commission voted five to one to recommend that the city council adopt a temporary waterfront, commercial development, construction moratorium. And the language that's before you this evening, I would have that moratorium be in effect for six months. Um, should you enact and impose a moratorium for the next six months, uh, staff's intention is to work with the Planning Commission. Um, and our um, consulting planner, David Drossick. Uh, and do a number of things and, and reviewing your ordinances over the next few months. We want to review. Uh, what the ordinances currently allow. Uh, we want to take a look at your master plan and, and, and make sure that the zoning that's in place, would it actually implement your, your master plan that you have in place? Uh, is it going to result in the, you know, desirable waterfront development that the community's ideally um, looking for? Um, we want to review best practices and examples of waterfront, commercial development guidelines and, and requirements. Um, we want to do some uh, community engagement and, and uh, gather some public feedback that could be in the form of online surveys. Um, with some waterfront focused questions or visual preference options. Um. Certainly, all the planning commission meetings are also open to the public, and this discussion will be very open, very transparent. I have plenty of opportunity for public feedback. Uh, because it's important to hear what the community uh, has to say about this uh, you know, pure waterfront. It's, it's very important to the community. Um, from there, we would want to prepare some zoning recommendations and potentially uh, overlay district boundaries. Um, any proposed zoning ordinance changes would be subject to a, a public hearing. Uh, and then a recommendation would ultimately come back to you as a city council for any final decisions on changes to your ordinance. So that's what we'd be looking to do over the next six months, should you uh, decide to impose a moratorium. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Well, first, let's uh, I think we should probably start with a, with a motion, and then we can have a discussion. Go ahead, Garnet.
Motion to adopt ordinance number two, three, zero, three, two, two, dash, B, Temporary Waterfront, Commercial Development and Construction Moratorium.
A second.
Motion, Lewis, second Muncie, uh, discussion. Any discussion among the council?
No, I appreciate this discussion we had the other day. Wednesday was.
We did spend a fair amount of time on this uh, at our workshop on Wednesday. So if the council is comfortable, there's no further questions, I'm happy to entertain a. A vote, and the clerk will um, do a roll call on this one.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Wheels excused, Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stan's excused.
Thank you. Uh, we are at sixteen B, the uh, EOADA Letter to Business Owners. It's on page thirty-four, your packet. Uh, Brian, uh, walk us through that one more time, please.
Yeah, certainly there. Um, you had quite a bit of discussion on this at your workshop meeting as well. Uh, essentially, we discussed that, that um. Uh, another tourist season is, is fast approaching, and um, we, we've taken a look at um. And the zoning ordinance and have uh, your zoning ordinance right now requires that um, somebody wants to expand um, their seating outdoors, that's gonna, into the right of way, which would include sidewalks and really the right of way definition includes streets. Um, there would be a requirement to go through a, a zoning approval process. Certainly during the pandemic, um, you and many, many other communities uh, took swift action. Uh, during the time of an emergency and, and many unknowns to uh, you know, uh, establish a, a process where there was some, some, some discretion. Um, and some flexibility so that businesses could expand their seating outdoors. Um. In early twenty twenty-two, um, you continued that, that flexibility during the time of many unknowns related to, you know, transmission risk related to the virus. We still actually at that time still had high transmission, and there was still a lot of unknowns going into last summer. Essentially, what um, staff is, is brought, wants to seek your um. Uh, only wanted to bring it to your attention that essentially there's. At this point, a lot of kind of hybrid approvals. We have some folks that maybe had prior zoning approval. Um, and then they expanded things, you know, on their sidewalks or into the streets even more, which, which is done on a temporary basis. Um, and then there's some that maybe never received zoning approval, but on a temporary basis expanded onto the sidewalks or out into the streets, given, you know, everything that was occurring. So. Um, we're asking for your uh, endorsement of continuing flexibility for twenty twenty-three and really uh, providing staff with continued prosecutorial discretion. Over the summer, we intend to work with legal counsel to make sure that our um, zoning and, and other kind of uh, police powers, pieces of our ordinances are in alignment. Um, and then come um, November first, we would be expecting folks to follow that zoning approval process uh, that's in place. And so we intend to, if you. Provide the endorsement tonight and um, and a policy direction to us. Uh, we intend to send a letter to all of these restaurants and business owners. So they're well aware that, hey, we're gonna be working on this over the summer, what the expectation would be come November first, and then we actually intend on holding some sort of a. Kind of open house to uh, invite those restaurants and business owners to uh, to join us here uh, at City Hall. We can kind of walk them through um, what that, that zoning approval process looks like, the applications that would be required. Um, and then answer any questions that they have. So.
Great. Thanks. Any questions for Ryan? Go ahead, Garnet. No? No, you're good? Okay.
Yep. Motion to, I'll just motion to continue, continue flexibility and staff discretion for temporary expanded outdoor dining during the twenty twenty-three spring, summer, fall tourist season.
Second.
So motion Lewis, second Baldwin, and now discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Ryan, for presenting that information. Uh, it, it, we talked about this last Wednesday at the workshop too, is that I think it's just prudent for the community to, you know, now take an opportunity to kind of get things right, right? As you mentioned, the, the community and the council were very responsive to a. Literally once in a century event, and um, it's been well received. Uh, I've heard nothing but good things. There's been a few things that we've had to, you know, kind of manage here and there, but for the most part, people love it. And so how do we make that actually manageable for the city staff and for the restaurant business owners in town to do it going forward? And what's that gonna look like? What's best for Sagatuck? So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I expect the Planning Commission will have some discussion about this as well. With zoning changes and potential discussions there. So it's a good move.
Great. Any further discussion? Don't see anything else in discussion. So uh, this one is a voice vote. So um. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? No? Any opposed? None. So motion carries. Uh, now we are at uh, sixteen C, the STR Task Force recommend, recommendations. This is page thirty-eight. It will be a voice vote. Uh, we should get a motion on the floor and then we can have a discussion.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Garnet.
Motion to appoint Sean Steele, Kevin Tringali, Elizabeth Boroma, Kathy Hart, Anne Guth, Joe Clark, Holly Anderson, Stephen Mans, and Lauren Stanton to the Short Term Rental Task Force.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Uh, open it up for discussion.
No. Good discussion about this the other day. Very thorough. I appreciated it.
As I said, um. Steve Mans and I, uh, and Ryan, who's before us, uh, spent quite a bit of time interviewing, I believe, twenty-four, twenty-three different candidates.
Mm-hmm.
Um, pared it down into a shortlist. Um, it was a very difficult choice. Um, I appreciate the sentiment that's been brought forward uh. Tonight and the emails I've had from other people that, that didn't get on the task force. I would really urge everyone to stay engaged. Um, we need as many voices in the room, so please do participate. Uh, ex officio or however, however you want to describe your participation, but um, I'm very much uh, looking forward to a lot of community involvement on this one, and I'm really excited. Um, uh, the task force. I really think the people uh, that came before us um, for the interviews, um, they bring a lot of different viewpoints to the table. Um, but there's one thing in common. They all expressed a deep uh, love for this community and a desire to, to work on it, on a very difficult problem. Uh, for, you know. For many years, it may have been the elephant in the room, or sometimes it kind of felt like one of those subjects you can't bring up at the family dinner room, dining room table, you know, on Thanksgiving, but I think we're gonna have the discussion. I think it's gonna be a good discussion, and I'm really hopeful. Uh, that the entire community participates in this because we know tourism has been part of Sagatuck's history for, for more than a century, and. The way I see it, uh, this is a resource management issue. Um, you know, we, we manage our waterfront, we manage our beautiful natural environment here. And it only makes sense that we would also actively manage uh, our, our beautiful housing stock and our historic district. And so I'm really excited about this group. And Steve, uh, you're on and you were. You did the, the yeoman's share of the work here. You interviewed via phone about two dozen people. So any thoughts you'd like to share before we um?
Vote? No, I think I was like you, you know, getting very impressed with those individuals who offered to volunteer. I know that one of the considerations that you, me, and Ryan, as well as council had kind of asked us to do was to strongly look at the list of candidates and consider. You know, residency versus non-residence. Um, I, I listened, I heard some of the comments earlier. And I will, like you had already, you just mentioned yourself, everyone who expressed an interest and applied. Had a strong interest in doing what is best for Sagatuck as well as the community. Of the nine names that are listed here, you know, six of them are full-time residents, voters within the city. Two of the three that are not have very extensive businesses in the city of Sagatuck, which means their businesses are, are here, their business taxes are here. So I, and then the only one that is not a resident or has like a primary focus of the business is the realtor, and the realtor, I think, is important for the real estate individual. To have a tri-community type of feel, to be able to bring in not only what's happening within the city of Sagatuck, but also to kind of relate what would be taking place. Out of the city of Sagatuck. And so therefore, we kind of looked at it, and I feel very comfortable with the recommendations that have been made and set into motion.
Thank you for that, Steve. Any further discussion before we vote?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, yeah, this is a uh. This is a difficult step forward for the city, um, especially when we have non-residents involved. Um, and, and I've had numerous conversations with Chairman Mans. I've had two of the candidates that apply that are residents that contacted me personally to discuss the decision process, and I've talked with Chairman Mans about that as well. It's a hard call, and ultimately where we need to go with this, and I think we're gonna get there, is gonna be a. Group of people who actually represent the areas of concern and focus that we, I, I identified. And I think we need to be ready to be able to answer the question to those that are asking it and saying, okay, if you had a resident, non-resident applying for a specific category. What was the tipping point for the non-resident? I had, that, that, that's a fair question. That's a fair question. It deserves to be answered clearly. And I know Chairman Mans, you and I have had this discussion, and, and, and I don't envy you having been in the seat you're in and going through that process. You did a yeoman's job, as the mayor said, so I. I appreciate the effort, but I think that's just something we're gonna have to be ready to answer that question because it's going to be continually asked. Um, and that doesn't necessarily stand in the way of my approval of anybody, but it's just something we need to be aware of because I, I agree with Mr. Clungall. This is a Sagatuck related, or this is a specific Sagatuck's issue. And it should be specific to Sagatuck folks. Um, and as you mentioned, the three people that are non-residents, you know, have a very, a long history in, in, in the city. Um, and um, you know, are very familiar with some of the things that the city is facing from this issue. Um, but I think we just need to be careful that we are able to answer that question when asked. If you had two resident, non-resident, and the resident was supposed to be the focus, how did you choose a non-resident? So, and I'm not looking for the answer to that question. I just think we need to be ready for that. The other thing that kind of concerned me about the resident or about the um, about the uh, task force was a response by a fellow council member last week when one of the um. Non-residents was mentioned, there was a, a, a audible yes and a fist pump. Um, and I, I just am concerned about that. Um, it indicates to me that there is maybe something, I, I don't know. I just, that kind of troubled me. So.
Any other council comments on this?
Um, I, I will piggyback on what you said, Russ. Um, um, I agree. Um, uh, we are gonna get questioned if we put a non-resident into, but again, uh, two of them do have uh, experience in business uh, here. Um, uh, there is one resident now, um, the Realtor position um, is uh, 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 and that was filled by Anne Guth, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I appreciate everybody who's wants to take the time to delve into this uh, not so popular matter. Um, but she, she's, she's not a Realtor or she is a Realtor? Is that what I'm understanding or?
She is. She works for Jackwa Realty.
But you had said at the meeting that, that she was working on getting her license.
She is. She is working on getting her license. Yes, yes, yes. Please, uh, I'm sorry, folks. Uh, please be respectful. Please.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, any further comments among the council? Uh, with that, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Any knows? Motion carries. We are at sixteen D, the Solberg Dock Request on page forty-two. Is this one you, Ryan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll handle this one. Thank you. Um, you may recall that Mr. Solberg was here at your workshop meeting uh, on Wednesday, and Mr. Solberg's request is to replace a dock. Um, he would also like his five-year lease uh, renewed. Um, and so that's the action that's in front of you, and we do appreciate Mr. Solberg's patience for making it all the way through the meeting until uh, his agenda item at the workshop. And so the sample motion in front of council is to extend the street and parcel structure, structure, dockage license agreement with Mr. Scott Solberg. Whose address is seven twenty Park Street for five years from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Allow for construction of a new dock, subject to the applicable local and state regulations. Final agreement to be executed by mayor or mayor pro tem, and after staff and legal review and approval.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Okay. So, motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Uh, any discussion on the um, on the motion? We, once again, it was discussed at length at our workshop, um, and it is just a renewal. There's really no substantive changes to it. Uh, no discussion then? Don't see any. Uh, this is also a voice vote. Uh, all in favor, please say yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Any, any knows? Motion carries. Uh, E, uh, dock agreement, street ends, page fifty-two, another voice vote item. Ryan, over to you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, this one is a housekeeping item. Uh, we're talking about the twenty twenty-three municipal license renewals. Uh, we discussed this at your workshop. The motion in front of you is to approve and or deny the twenty twenty-three municipal license agreement rates as presented on the attachment. A, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign such agreements for twenty twenty-three as presented.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
Mr. So moved.
Thank you. Motion Lewis, second Gardner. Uh, once again, any discussion on this one? We spent a fair amount of time on it the other day as well. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, we had, we had, uh, I think last year we had actually got the names of the leases. Yes, so if we, and, and he got the formula fixed, which is something we brought up, so thank you very much. Um, also too, I, I, I mentioned this last year, and I think it's something the city needs to continue to be focused on is item ten within the lease agreement. Maintenance, uh, lease licensee shall at all times keep the premises free of debris and a neat, clean, safe, reasonable, and orderly condition and keep all structures and items located there on in good and safe maintenance and repair. Licensee agrees not to move, alter, or remove any deck, item, or structures now, now existing or hereafter built on within or at the premises without the prior written consent of the city. The reason I mention that is because um, in, in my experience, there are particular street ends that seem to struggle every year in terms of keeping clean. Um, I know last year, the street end at Mason, um. Eventually got cleaned up and someone did a lot of trimming. It looked great. And so I just, I think the city needs, and I think that was the DPW department that did that. So. I, I appreciate that. I, I just think it's something we need to emphasize with people that are, you know, able to lease these street ends, that they have a responsibility to maintain them and, and, you know, keep them in. Because it, it, those are gateways to the walkway, they're gateways to the river, and um, I, I think it's just important that we emphasize that to be kept in exactly as item ten says in the leasing agreement.
Right. Important. Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, any further comments by the council? If none, this is also a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? None. Great. This takes us to sixteen F, our last item in new business. QR code, ask for CBB, page sixty-six. Ryan, we're all excited about this one.
That's a fun one, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, so this is a, this is about a request to um. To partner with the CBB in printing a QR code on the back of the daily beach passes, which you sold forty-one thousand of last year. The QR code will take you to a webpage hosted by the CBB, the Visitors Bureau, who, who, those who are not familiar with the CBB acronym. Um, and on that homepage, there's gonna be some pertinent information, one related to uh, the interurban. Uh, two, uh, current events, uh, and three, uh, restaurant hours and hours of operation. Anything a tourist would want when they're, when they're getting off the beach as far as information. I did check with Phyllis at the, the director at the inner urban. She's excited about the idea as well. Um, and so the sample motion in front of council is to allow staff to work with the CBB to create a QR code to be printed on Oval Beach and Downtown Park, Parking Passes. Uh, directing visitors to a homepage hosted by the CBB that provides pertinent visitor information.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion Muncie, second Baldwin. Uh, any other discussion on the um, the QR?
Uh, just more questions. Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's a modest price, it's a modest price increase for double-sided printing. Uh, two questions. One is who actually does the printing for us? A good question. I don't know the answer, but Peter is still on the line. He'll know. You're, you're with us? You're muted?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta get the right button. Um, it's howling a little out of howling, and it, it, yeah, it's a modest increase, so I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. And also, do we know what that modest increase is? Thank you. Thank you. And also, do we know what that modest increase is? Are we talking a couple hundred dollars, talking?
Probably less than a couple hundred bucks. We used to do it in the past.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else on this one, team?
No.
No, it's great. With that, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? None. Great. We are done with new business. We are at seventeen. Public comment on any item of interest. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I will open it up to the floor. And as usual, please state your name and residence for the for the clerks' minutes. Thank you.
Hello, Ethan Barty, five eighty-four Lake Street, Quaint Cottage's property manager, manager of the business. You know, first, I want to thank the task force, you know, or the, all you working on the task force. And no, it's a lot of hard work, a lot of things, you know, I think you're getting right. Couple of things I think you're getting wrong, and I just want to point it out. I mean, you know, the first thing is, you know, I applied to be on it and I didn't get picked, but I'm okay with that. In my place.
Is that right or wrong?
It's sorry. In my, in my place, you have Kevin Tringali and you have Sean Steele, which I think will be excellent representatives on the force, and that's, that is the area that I applied for. So although I didn't get it, and I wish I did, you know, very happy that you picked those two individuals. They will do just as good. You know, if not better than me. Okay, so so thank you for that. I do want to, again, you know, point out transparency. They, it's a word that gets thrown around a lot, and I think you're missing it here, too. You guys put guidelines out there for what you wanted in a task force. Those guidelines changed in a, in a, in a closed meeting or whatever. You had people apply for a certain area and you move people around. I think you need to look closely at that and look at what you all decided for the guidelines of what you were looking for. You change the guidelines, you move people around. Nothing against Anne. Anne applied for the property manager position, which she is qualified for. She has three years, doesn't have Kevin Tringali or me or Sean Steele, but she is qualified for that position. She is not a real estate agent. So you have taken someone and put them in a spot behind closed doors, or however you did it, move people around, and it appears that you're just putting someone in there that you want. You know, I I heard conversation when you guys had discussion about Anne, someone knew Anne's dad. And I I don't know what relevancy that is, you know, and and again, I'm not saying anything against Anne. Anne's very, does a very good job as a property manager. She's not a real estate agent. So I would even challenge that there's going to be some legal conflicts of someone representing themselves as a real estate agent, giving input as a real estate agent. You know, you guys have a couple, you can move someone else around, too. You can move a person that applied, Mark, who spoke earlier, who is a real estate agent, doesn't own any rental properties. So Dick Watkins, same thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to offer comment?
I would like to.
Oh, Gary, we're just going to finish up with the folks in the room and then we'll get to the Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Baina Decker, one twenty-eight. That's the best.
I think it's theirs. It's not mine.
That says, yeah.
Regarding the task force, I'm sure it was a very hard decision. Anne's great, but you know, I agree with Ethan. She's not an agent yet. So when you're asking for stats, how many agents, how many houses is sold? Which ones are rentals? Which ones are not? She's not on the MLS on the board. So I'm twenty years, you know, over twenty years, there's three brokers in the room here, or four brokers. I'm just saying that Dick Wass is somebody with more, I mean, with experience. Anne's a great property manager, but isn't that does, isn't on our MLS board yet. And the background on what kind of stats you need with that task force. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, this is, can you hear me?
Gary, we're still taking, taking comments from folks in the room.
Gary, Barry, what's the difference?
Barry, I thought you said Gary.
You're next.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Barry Johnson, forty-three-year resident voter of the city of Sagatuck, former planning commissioner, former city councilman, and former mayor. I'd like to, first of all, thank Councilmember Lewis for her continued involvement on the household hazardous waste initiative and the success of that whole process is a lot on her shoulders, and I really appreciate that continuing work on that. Thank you, Garnett. I would also like to thank Mayor Dean for his March twenty-third letter to the Commercial Record. It was well-written. It detailed the residents' priority issues, the council's commitment made to our voters on those issues, and the transparency and process that will go that people can participate in. So that's a very, very good letter. And good stuff. I do have one rub. And it's on process. I'll have to go back and listen to the meeting, but the motions went by pretty quick. And the first thing, the person that makes the motion should state the motion, so everybody knows what they're voting on. And just saying, so moved, there's, there's a whole half a page in Roberts was of order where it says so moved is not really good process. And then before you vote, the chairperson or the mayor in our case restates the motion prior to the vote, just in case there were any amendments made. And again, we all know what we're voting for. So that's my little thing about process, and I think you guys are doing a great job, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Always, always room for improvement. Thank you. I I think Tammy's going to beat you to the punch here, Dick. Yeah.
Tammy Kerr from Century Twenty-One. I've been a broker. I had my office down on Lake.
I'm sorry, your place of residence. I'm sorry, Tammy.
What?
You, where do you reside?
Three one nine one Beach Trail Drive.
Okay, thanks.
I've had my office when I was a broker in Sagatuck on Lake Street for years. I've been a broker for twenty-one years. My big issue with Anne being on the task committee is the fact that she is not a real estate agent. She cannot act as a real estate agent. And I'm more concerned about her because if she does, she may not get her license and she might have a hefty fine. It's against the law. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
I just want to do a short riff on unfairness. I was struck, favorably struck, by the weight that the Planning Commission and y'all, I think as well, gave to the people who were who were speaking against the moratoriums, short-term rentals, because they had houses that were like within weeks of selling and losing, potentially losing buyers and deals coming apart, whatever. That obviously, you know, could have been totally tuned out. But you guys listened to it and responded to it, I thought, favorably. So that's a good thing. So as it relates to fairness, I want to explore it from a different angle, but related to short-term rentals, specifically to regulation, their regulation, inspection, licensing, oversight, and so on. So a few questions in that regard, just questions. How fair is it to the zoning and planning director official, whatever to perform all administrative, short-term rental functions, licensing, back all the checks and whatnot, with no code enforcement employee reporting to him? None. It's him. He does it all. Shouldn't the city have code enforcement officers and vehicles twenty-four seven during the season at least? With the costs covered by realistic short-term rental licensing fees? In the same regard, how fair is it to require the sheriff to enforce our short-term rental regulations on overcrowding and noise, the stuff that really drives people nuts in this town? And such when the sheriff's people, quite honestly, have better things to do, I mean, more important things to do, protecting the public safety that we all pay for and that we pay them for? How fair is it to the short-term rental customers, the people who rent these places, to have the premises they stay in inspected only once every three years? One example, smoke detectors, CO2 det- or CO detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, need batteries more often than that. Fire District recommends every, every year batteries replaced on smoke detectors. How fair is it for the fire department, speaking of them, to charge a hundred seventy-five dollars for an inspection, which, over the three-year life of the permit, equals fifty-four dollars a year for an inspection that may cost as much as three times as much, maybe more? How fair is it to give short-term rental violators a gratuitous first-round pass on those violations? Shouldn't short-term rental violations be met with immediate and significant fines to effectively deter unlicensed properties and poor oversight? Oh, shoot. Anyway, I harbor, I harbor no, I harbor no resentment to short-term rental. I get it. There's lots of them. But the rest of the community should not be subsidizing the costs that relate directly to short-term rentals.
Thank you, Dan.
Sorry to go long.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? I don't see any other takers in the audience. Now I can open it up to the Zoom call. Gary Kemp, why don't you kick it off? You were quite keen to speak, so go for it, Gary.
Well, it's because I didn't listen and look at my Zoom, I guess. On Street, Sagatuck. And I did apply for the task force. It is a great idea. I think it is needed because there is a lot of issues and a lot of misunderstandings, both to the good and to the bad, if you will, about short-term rentals. I was concerned about some of the people on the list in terms of their experiences and experiences in both the community and even in terms of the areas they were picked. And I noticed just today, because I was sick all weekend, but I noticed just today that my own application somehow got classified in the wrong category. And put me down that I had no short-term rentals, and it put me down that I, I was negative about short-term rentals, which is just the opposite of what I am. I do have two of them and I am positive about them. But Ryan seemed to think that was a clerical area or error, and I hope that's the case. Lastly, I I would like to continue to be involved and participate as much as possible because I, I do think it's, it's a very important project for all of us. And I just hope that we've got the right balance. I'm somewhat concerned that we tend to seem to do stuff like this in the winter when there's still a lot of people away from the community. A lot of people who spend their summers here, who maybe didn't see the email or maybe didn't pay any attention to it for whatever reason, didn't get an opportunity to really be a part of it. So I, I thought that was kind of a negative, but that seems to be a reality of dealing with a year-round community for people who live here all the time and and yet a lot of people who go south. So those are my comments. Just I hope it comes out good and I'll be there to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Jane, you've got your hand up, I believe, or?
Yes, I do.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
And please, please, please identify where you live and your.
I will. One thirty Perryman Street, Sagatuck. First of all, I would like to thank the people that applied to be on this committee. It's going to be a rather long, possibly contentious period of time. I remember the first time I met Scott Sullivan, and I told him, Scott, we're a very contentious town. Yeah, it's true. As I left the workshop Wednesday, late afternoon, I was thinking about a unit that I taught in U.S. history regarding company towns. Anne Pullman, on the South Side of Chicago, his great-granddaughter lived in my building in Hyde Park. Company towns were very popular a hundred, a hundred thirty years ago. But they didn't turn out that well. They were very controlling. The people really lost out. And looking at the packet for today's meeting, it seems like how many more applications did we get for short-term rentals? I fear Sagatuck is going to be a short-term rental company town. I hope I'm wrong, but it doesn't look good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Steve, you've had your hand up. Go, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute during this section of public comment to not specifically address, but just to say a few words about some of the things that I've heard. In regards to the sessions and the interview process for the task force, I can assure you, as well as anyone who's listening, that everything was done totally open. My first round of interviews, which, yes, during the interviews and during the the review of the app, applications with each candidate, there was a number of candidates that we realized were in the wrong category. Example, Gary Kemp, like he had already said, he was incorrect. We didn't go back and change the listing of the app, of the, where the applicants fell. I made the changes on my list, which I then discussed with Scott as well as Ryan when we were deliberating about who we were going to move forward to the second round of interviews. So there was some situations where individuals were moved because of that. In regards to the timing, we tried to have this set up so that we have the task force in place so they could start meeting by the late, you know, middle to late spring, knowing that, yes, majority of people are in town. So if if the task force decides to have community forums or to do, or do surveys, we would have the majority of people in town during the summer months, which gives us that opportunity. So I think that when, when we look at the individuals, you know, we try to look at, making certain that we tried to follow what was the stakeholder groups that were set out. But each stakeholder group did, did had some flexibility as to those who could try to fill it. And I can also, as we said earlier, we did give preference to the residents in many of the situations and felt that we had a strong group here that represented the diversity of what we were looking for. So I just wanted to kind of bring that forward. I'm looking forward to the task force being formed, to us having the third-party consultant that we can bring in, that we can start to try to talk about how do we move forward? Because this is an agenda item that is of very strong importance to the Planning Commission, the council, as well as the community. And I think that we will have a lot of activity that will involve the public and anyone who had applied. We do encourage them to stay involved. We will reach out to them because many of them have expertise in areas that we would like to have their input. So if they're not actively involved, we will try to engage them ourselves. So that's just, I just wanted to bring that up as we're kind of closing out here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Anyone else on the Zoom who would like to offer comment? Oh, Suresh, please.
Thanks, Mayor Dean. Yeah, I, first of all, I'm really grateful for the decision that was made by the.
Suresh, sorry, just, you know, just, just for the clerk's benefit, a name and 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 address. Thank you.
Yes, six forty-seven Butler Street. Suresh Roger Park. Sorry, I'm very grateful for the decision that was made by the council to not implement the short-term rental moratorium. I think, as you saw by the overwhelming, overwhelming voices that were in the room and virtually, that this is something that did make a lot of people uncomfortable. And and while there was some discussion by council members that it is council's job to have these uncomfortable conversations, I'm grateful for the recognition that it could be done in a more fair and transparent way. You know, while the decision was parked, where I continue to feel a little bit of uneasiness and some scuttlebutt in the community is that the decision wasn't put to bed, even if, even if there was significant outcry from the community to do so. I'm in fully in favor of the short-term rental task force to to listen, to learn. And I'm in fully in favor of the short-term rental task force to, to listen, to learn, to make recommendations and to ultimately get you know, rules and regulations put into, put onto paper. Um, however, the current moratorium and the way that it's written, it gives very little wiggle room for people that do have some exceptional circumstances. Um, and to be completely candid, where there could be significant financial impact. Uh, I have attended most of the workshops. I've attended the planning commission meetings, the council meetings. Uh, and what I've heard from different stakeholders that they're, that aren't positive about short-term rentals, that um, there is issues with noise and just general disruption. And I'm very sympathetic to those situations. And clearly we need a solution. However, there, there are already ordinance, ordinances and processes in place to address those situations. Uh, and I would sincerely request that we find ways to enforce police and address those situations as they arise. The converse view of that, um, that for, for those that are not in favor of the moratorium is, is generally around people's personal finances. And this is a very personal topic. Clearly, it impacts people's livelihoods. Uh, what we've heard from these stakeholders is that they are either building homes. Um, that counted on short-term rental income. They're in the process of renovating homes or closing on a home that had just spent a short-term rental income. Uh, they're in the process of selling homes where a moratorium could impact their property values. Um, and if this was enacted without any type of amendment. Uh, these would put these decisions that have been months or years in the making into some form of chaos. And not only do I have concern for the people in the community where I do know, that do know about this information. But there are plenty of people, I'm sure, that don't know that these meetings are happening as well. And while I completely understand that this does not impact existing short-term rental licenses, it may impact people who've made decisions based on existing information and rules and regulations that are currently in place. Totally get this is a delicate conversation, completely understand, um, and support the decision moving forward. But I would just like those facets to be taken into consideration in future.
Thank you very much, Suresh. Perfect timing. Um, anyone else on the Zoom call who would like to um, make a comment? Uh, that's Suresh's hand. Do you see anything? Any, anyone, Jamie? I don't. All right. Well, with that, we're gonna close public comment. Uh, and that takes us to item eighteen. We have correspondence on page sixty-seven of your packet. Uh, and now we are at uh, item nineteen, council comments. Uh, I think I started with Helen last time, so Garnet, I'll, I'll turn it over to you for council comment.
Yeah, I've got uh, two things. One, I wanted to go back to the manager's report and just thank the manager for the, what I'm noting, noticing is more and more collaborative efforts with your compadres in Douglas and in the township and now expanding to Holland. And I think that speaks very loudly to your comfort and your role and uh, the inclusivity of what we're trying to do here, not only as a professional staff, but also as a council. I think it speaks very highly. So thank you very much for all your efforts. Cause I, it's good to be out and about and working with others. Um, I also wanted to um, express my appreciation for everyone who applied for the ad hoc committee. I know it's always a little bit um, tense when you apply for something and you have many more applicants than you have spots. And it's certainly not at all a lack of appreciation for your desire and your interest at all. Um, and you know, it's, we've heard both Steve and Scott, the mayor, talk about how difficult the decision it was. And I think you should take comfort in that because they did not arrive at a decision easily. Um, and it speaks, in my opinion, very highly of the folks who are on that ad hoc committee, and I think they will represent us all very well because they're all very professional individuals. Um, and I, I appreciate the folks who are gonna serve on that committee because it is going to take a lot of time and a lot of energy in a very short period of time. It's a heavy, heavy lift. Um, and so for someone to be willing to do that as a volunteer is great and it's appreciated by all of us. Um, and I look forward to their recommendations. That's it.
Thank you, Garnet.
Thank you. Uh, I would echo uh, council member Lewis's comments about the task force applicants. Uh, appreciate the effort that will be put in by these individuals and our chairman of the planning commission, as well as uh, planning commissioner Holly Anderson and Lauren Stan from council. Uh, it's a big lift. It's gonna be a lot of work and um, uh, I, I will be doing what I can to support that group as it goes forward. And uh, this is a Sagatuck discussion and um, I'm really looking forward to seeing what they have to come up with. Um, and uh, to manager's report, a lot of items on deck. Um, so there's a lot going on there. I appreciate all the information. A couple of things on there that um, I would like to see us, um, and I'd sent an email to the mayor a couple of weeks ago. Uh, particularly as it relates to boost our trail proposal. Uh, the um, I can't remember the exact name of the group, but there's Lauren Stan, pardon me. Holly Leo and former council member Ken Truster uh, are on that group. And I'd like to see us come back and discuss replacement of Ken Truster on that group. Um, I don't think it should be put into the park and public works committee going forward. It's incredibly important to this community from a financial standpoint. It's high visibility and I think we should stick with what we'd originally intended to do and that's have a separate group. I can't remember the exact name of it, but uh, the mayor had responded that it's something we probably want to talk about it, council, make sure we're on the right path on that. Also on the airport ESA environmental study. Um, I do want to uh, just caution that the airport property is not a priority. It has not come up in our strategic planning sessions. Um, I understand there's some discussion around what maybe to do out there and I would go back to comment I made several months, several meetings ago. I really think the community should stop for a moment and look at that property and evaluate what's the best use. Um, it's a hundred and seventy acres, I believe, is the size of it. If I, if I have my numbers correct. Um, there are certainly some things out there that could be done, uh, you know, inexpensively in short-term. But I think ultimately we should be looking at this as a long-term asset in terms of what can be done with it. So an environmental study, I don't know what the cost of that is. I think I looked it up. It could be six to eight thousand dollars depending on the complexity of it. I just think we want to be careful about that property because it could be used for a number of different things. So I just put that on the table. Um, also too. Uh, I got several calls from people that had been on the Zoom meetings and they're having difficulty hearing us sometimes. So I think this is a work in progress. I think what we should do is maybe find some professional assistance to maybe make sure that we're talking to our microphones appropriately and because I've had several people say, Russ, I can't hear you or I can't see you. And, and I don't know if others have had that comment, but this is a really, I mean, this has been a great tool for the council and, and the community. I want to make sure people can be heard. And so they feel comfortable that they can be on here and they can actually observe what's going on. So um, lastly, I also want to talk about, and, and, and the short-term rental task force has been thinking about the whole discussion around it. Um, I really think the city needs to also take a serious look at its ethics policy. Um, we do have an ethics policy.
Send me at them, please.
Can you request that? I can't leave them.
Oh, go on, go on, Russ.
Yes, thank you. Um, it's been a long time since the city has actually stopped and taken a look at its ethics policy. And if you watch the news at all, you're seeing a lot of communities in the state of Michigan, as well as nationwide, are really stepping back and taking a look at what they have in place. Given the complexity of some of the issues in town currently, I really think it's important and it come upon us as council members to have a policy which reflects the community. Also requires disclosures of relationships, business and personal relationships um, on a yearly basis. And I'd like, I'd like to ask that, that the council make this something that we take a look at sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Gregory, over to you.
Um, I'll repeat what Garnet and Russ said. I appreciate the time and the um, uh, that, uh, that Steve mans and uh, and uh, looking forward to working with our short-term rental task force. Um, I've gotten lots of passion about lots of different ideas from all the community, my neighbors and my friends. And I want to say I appreciate those phone calls and messages. Um, uh, also, um, uh, it's, it's not gonna be hard. It's not gonna be easy to do. Um, a- as we go forward, um, but I'm appreciative that Steve, um, and the uh, planning commission, along with the short-term rental task force. Uh, will be reaching out to the folks that we heard from tonight, uh, like Tammy Kerr, um, I, Mark Clungle, um, and other folks uh, with their, with it, with their opinions. And, and to bring, to bring everybody into this conversation. And I want them to continue being a part of it as well, if you weren't picked to be on a committee. Um, uh, so wanted to mention all that. Also, I want to thank Garnet Lewis, uh, Mayor Jerry Donovan and uh, and our um, uh, manager, township manager Daniel DeFranco for judging the contest at the uh, at the Aaron Go Bark Parade in the middle of a blizzard like it was the year before in Sagatuck. Um, uh, we, we did it with uh, Randy Walker and uh, her partner Anna and uh, also Douggy, the dog was there. Uh, there were actually about fifty people and their pets um, that showed up. Uh, we didn't have a chicken this year. We've had chickens in the past, but might have been too cold for that. Um, and other animals, but they were all dogs that we had and we had a good time. Want to thank also uh, the um, uh, Capri Martinek from the uh, State Farm who uh, provided the hot chocolate and the cookies. And we sure did make a fun time out of a blizzard. And um, and uh, and then also, um, the next parade will be in Douglas for the Easter. Uh, the annual Easter uh, parade and egg hunt. And if you're interested, any business or anybody out there listening is interested in donating candy and treats. You can get ahold of the girls that put that on at their Facebook page, uh, the annual Douglas um, uh, Easter parade and egg hunt. And uh, yeah, you have to write all that out, but you'll find them on Facebook. And, and if you've got a bag of candy or want to pick up a couple of bags of candies to put in those plastic eggs, they, the girls there would appreciate it.
Thank you. I also want to say that I appreciate everyone who volunteers and applied for the short-term rental task force. Does take a lot of time and effort for all of our committees, um, all of our commissions. And um, we, we do need to be grateful. Um, they're all volunteer basis. And um, to that end, I really need to address something. I was hoping that I would have heard some remorse for some incendiary comments made uh, last week by Councilman Gardner at the workshop. Uh, I just feel like if there are specific accusations to make that they should be made. But to use the words nefarious and underhanded when describing actions of our planning commission, our city staff or our council. It's wildly inappropriate. I hope to never witness that behavior again. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think that leaves it to me. Um, one of the things I look at every day I walk into city hall is the um, state of Michigan historic plaque uh, right outside the door. It's the story of the city of Singapore. Singapore was a booming lumber town in the eighteen sixties, uh, rebuilding Chicago after the fire. Um, and I wonder sometimes, had they thought and talked with each other and said, you know, we're cutting down all the trees at a pretty rapid pace. I wonder if we should maybe plant a few trees, maybe manage our forests a little bit better. I wonder if Singapore would still be here. And so I think about that sometimes because for me, this is a resource management question. And that's why this council is active in regulating things like floating homes. Watching our waterfront to make sure our waterfront is available for all of the people of Sagatuck and our visitors. And um, now we're embarking on something very hard, which is potentially reforming some of our short-term rental regulations. So Sagatuck doesn't go the way of Singapore. Um, but let's be clear about this task force. Um, I have not just appointed supreme court justices to to rule on the city charter or to make policy. Indeed, um, this task force is advisory only. Uh, this task force will provide information to our planning commission who will deliberate and hopefully come up with some reforms to our short-term rental policy. And then they will bring it to us, the council. And then the council will discuss it and vote on it. Because we were the people that were voted to make these decisions by the public, by the people of Sagatuck. So you know, I, I would hope all of us would look at it in, in that light. Uh, we want to preserve this enterprise so, so all can prosper. Yeah, yeah, we got out of the lumber game a hundred and fifty years ago and we've been doing tourism really well for over a century now. That's not going away. Uh, frankly, it's only gonna get better, particularly if we work together to manage it and to manage the resource. And that's what it's all about. Uh, for those who didn't like the, the way the process went, um, I'm very comfortable with it. Uh, I was very comfortable with the way Chairman Mans handled it. Ryan has been a great guide. Sitting next to Ryan is our, is our city attorney Kyle. He was with us every step of the way. Jake, oh my goodness. I always call him Kyle. Jake.
He's been answering to Kyle, I think.
I don't know why, I don't know why I have this mental block. I do not know.
We have one in Kyle.
Can you bring, can you bring, can you bring Kyle next time? So I can just, so I can call him Jake or so? I don't know. Okay. You know, it's, I was on a roll too. I was on a roll, but no, not so much anymore. Anyways, um, I'm very comfortable i- in how we went about this. We, we worked very closely with, with council, legal council on it. Um, uh, but I am pleased though. I'm really pleased that everyone's coming out. I'm glad that we have the news media here. I'm glad we got Scott Sullivan from the record on the line. I'm glad we got Wood TV here. Uh, because once again, uh, this helps people get line of sight to the issue. And it sends the message out wha- far and wide that Sagatuck is like all the other destination communities up and down Lake Michigan, destination communities in California, down in Florida. Places that people want to come and, and vacation and recreate, people, places people want to come and buy houses because they want to put down roots. This tell, this sends the message and, and I'm thrilled the media is here because it helps get the word out that Sagatuck takes this issue seriously. And I want folks to know that we are going to actively, as a council, as long as I'm here, actively manage our resources. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. All in favor? Please say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned.